Good day and welcome to this Abington Town Meeting Review Show, the Warrant Review Show. My name is Attorney Sean Riley. I am the Town Moderator for the Town of Abington. And with me today is Rick LaFond, our Town Manager.
Let's begin with him.
Rick and I are going to try to briefly go over the structure and procedures for Town Meeting, which will be held on Monday, May 21st, just coming up, and also kind of review some of the big-ticket items that we'll be discussing and voting upon at this Town Meeting. Again, the Town Meeting is this coming Monday, May 21st. It starts at 7:00. And for the first time, we'll be holding our Town Meeting in a brand-new location, the new auditorium of our new middle high school. For those of you who are not familiar with the auditorium, as you come down Glennewitz Way and take the first driveway turn into the school, you will park at the first parking lot on your right, which is right near the turf fields. And there's a short walk over to the entrance into the auditorium lobby. There'll be signs and people there to guide you. Again, we'd like to start the meeting at 7:00, so it's imperative that folks try to arrive well before then. The doors will be open at 6:30. All voters will be required to check in through the Town Clerk. They will have tables set up in the lobby. And we will be checking you in this year by your last name, instead of by precincts that have been done in the past. We have to check in by precincts for Town Elections, but for Town Meeting, we can do it either way. And we found that in the past, checking in with your last name is a lot easier for people. So there'll be four lines in different parts of the alphabet. There'll be signs there to guide you. We do need 150 voters minimum to get started, so if everyone could try to plan on arriving 15 or 20 minutes before 7:00, you can check in and then find a seat in the auditorium. Although the auditorium sits about 750 people, we will be asking all voters to sit in the lower half of the auditorium, closest to the stage. That will be the section reserved for voters during Town Meeting. Anyone who's not a registered voter in Abington will be sitting in a segregated area because they will not be counted during any votes. On Monday night, we will be having a special Town Meeting in the typical annual Town Meeting. The special Town Meeting, we will start with first. And Rick, there's about -- there are seven articles on the special Town Meeting warrant. It's a short meeting, basically to do a couple of housekeeping items to kind of tidy up the budget as we get to the end of this fiscal year. Do you want to just give us a kind of a summary of what we're doing?
Sure. The first article is really, is just approving an article, an unpaid bill from a prior fiscal year, which is required by state law. It's a relatively small bill required by the state. The legislative body has to approve that. Second article and the third article are related to the recently approved police contract ratified by the selectmen and the police union. The second is just creating a pass-through account for paying police details. Right now, police have to wait until private parties actually pay the town, which sometimes can take weeks or months. So this is really, again, somewhat of a parliamentary move to create a mechanism so that they can get paid in a timely manner. The third actually is a mechanism to fund the police contract. Most of the expense is actually in next year's budget, but because this contract goes back several years, some of the expense is actually in the budget this year and will come out of the existing year budget. And this actually ratifies it by taking some money out of the budget that's already funded for the current year. Article four is simply majority vote of the town for, I'm sorry, Sean.
Article four is the snow and ice deficit.
The snow and ice deficit. Thank you. This takes some money out of current certified free cash to pay, to help pay off the current year's snow and ice deficit. Again, house cleaning, housekeeping, this happens every, every year. Five and six, Article five is, was intended to help pay for the fireworks display this year. And that is likely not going to be necessary because the fire chief believes he has sufficient funds in his budget remaining to do that. If necessary, the Finance Committee, the fire chief, Town Accountant and others believe that, well, not believe, but will make sure that the fire chief will have appropriate funds transferred into his budget at the end of the year, if necessary. Six and seven are, will be passed over also because in light of the proposal that we are all, that the Town Manager's budget, the Finance Committee's recommended budget to fund, to cede the full-day kindergarten program for the coming year, will not leave free cash to deposit this year into our stabilization in OPEB trust fund. So that, that again, that'll be seen in the operating budget for FY '19. So, so those articles would be recommended to be passed over on the special. These are recurring articles every, every year. If there's funds available, we, we put money in our savings account. So again, in light of the opportunity this year to fund that program, that's the recommendation for the special Town Meeting.
Right. So the special Town Meeting should not take very long. They're rather routine articles. And again, just to reiterate, the $4,500 request to help pay for fire department coverage during the July 9th fireworks, the Finance Committee's recommended we not approve that because, as Rick just mentioned, money has been set aside, or we believe is available in the fire department's account right now, that they can afford that. And if it becomes an issue for the fire department in the year, we will address that at the administrative level.
Right. Again, keeping in mind at the time that the articles have to be submitted, you know, about two months ago for these, for the annual and special Town Meeting, you know, responsible thing to do to make sure that there'd be money available. So the timing of this, of the requirement is, it was responsible thing to do at the time. But as time has gone on and budgets are monitored over a period of time, it would, it would seem not to be necessary.
Right. And the Abington Celebrates Committee is aware of this. They submitted the request and they're aware that it will not have to be funded at the special Town Meeting. And again, while we're on it, July 9th, Saturday night, Memorial Field, Abington Celebrates will be hosting, and they'll be having fireworks that night at 9:00. The gates to Memorial Field open, I believe it's 5:00. You'll get more information at Town Meeting and through other media sources from the Abington Celebrates Committee. So those seven items is, is the extent of the special Town Meeting. Once we're done with that, we would just close that portion of the meeting and we would move on to the annual Town Meeting. Typically, it's held in April, but in the last couple of years, we've postponed it. The selectmen decide where to have it and when to have it. They postponed it to put it a little bit earlier, sorry, later in the spring until we get a little bit more detailed information from the State House in Boston as to what our local aid figures are, so they can kind of zoom, zoom in a little bit better on the budget. And Rick mentioned the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee, you should be aware, for those of you who haven't been to Town Meeting, it's nine members from your community, nine residents who all volunteer to serve the town as a member of the Finance Committee. They review all the articles, especially the money articles. They review every line item of the budget with the Town Manager and Department Heads. And when we get to Town Meeting, it is the Finance Committee who makes the motion to recommend that you approve or not approve, we call it approve or pass over various articles as we go through. So you'll see our Chairman Matt Sala will be making most of the motions throughout the night as we proceed. So, in the annual Town Meeting warrant, there are 31 printed articles on the warrant. The first one, perhaps one of the more important ones, is the approval of the town budget. Maybe, Rick, if you could kind of give us a summary of how we look at this year's budget.
Sure. The, but, it's, this year, approximately 50 million, just under a $50 million budget this year. It's based upon, from a revenue standpoint, using the full, full 2.5% levy, a reasonably conservative new growth amount that recommended by the Deputy Assessor at this stage, a state aid figure that's still based upon the governor's proposal. So from a revenue standpoint, it is still reasonably conservative. That's one of the things that the town has been cited as a positive in terms of our recent upgraded bond rating in the last couple of years. That being said, there are some, I guess you'd say, some positives in here from an expenditure standpoint. As many people know, to the extent that they pay attention to what's on cable, and I know that may not be a huge population, no offense, Justin, it does recommend, the Town Manager's recommendation in conjunction with the Finance Committee's recommendation, does support the, the full-day kindergarten initiative of the school committee and school administration. So that is included in this $50 million recommendation. It also, the other staffing, I guess you'd say, priority of the absorbing two full-time police officer positions that were previously funded by grants. Those grants have expired and those positions have been included in the operating budget. It also includes two additional police officers for the second half of the coming fiscal year. We didn't include those for the full fiscal year funding, simply because, again, just trying to be conservative with our, with our expenditures. So those are, again, that brings the full staffing of the Police Department up to the, the high-water mark of the, of the staffing, which was at some point in the, in the 1990s, as I understand it, well before my time. The intent of that is to bring back the Detective Division of two, two detectives that the police chief has been seeking. It also brings the staffing to that, which had been the major staffing priority of the Board of Selectmen and, and my office, that goes back, priority that goes back approximately five years. So I guess, from a, so from, I guess you'd say, from a priority standpoint, those would be the things specifically in this budget that are different from the last several years and meets priorities that we had been trying to meet for a period of time. So, I, other than that, it is essentially a level services budget beyond, beyond those. And I guess those are significant, but in terms of staffing, other departments, I mean, certainly there are other initiatives that we weren't able to meet, but I think we're very pleased that we're able to do that at, at this time. One of the things that I think a lot of us were questioning and concerned about that may come up, and certainly the Finance Committee had, had concerns about this, part of what's, we're able to do with regard to the school staffing, I'm sorry, the, the kind, full-day kindergarten program, we're ceding that. It's approximately $450,000 from free cash, obviously using what free cash, one-time money for a, for a, what is intended to be a permanent service. We are convinced, based upon the conversations with the Department of Education and directly with the school administration, as well as a third-party analyst who specializes in the Chapter 70 formula, that with the increased enrollment that will come from the full-day kindergarten program, as well as student body that is coming back to the district with the building of this new facility and the opportunities that presents for students, that additional enrollment will increase the Chapter 70 state funding to this district in FY '20, the year following this coming fiscal year, that it will bring into the district recurring revenue from the state that will meet, almost meet dollar-for-dollar that seed money going forward. So had that not been the case, an expenditure of one-time funds in the form of free cash, this would not be something that people would be able to recommend. So we're confident that that will be the case going forward. So that's why, both in my budget, as well as the Finance Committee's budget, we're, we're pleased that we can make that recommendation at this time. So again, it's not something that has been taken lightly.
And it is, as you said, it's a balanced budget, once again.
It is a balanced budget, yes.
The Finance Committee and the Town Manager's budget are identical, so the Finance Committee will be making a motion to approve the budget as presented. We'll go through each page. It's all, it's four pages at the night of Town Meeting. But we need people and voters to be there to approve the budget, once again. So if you can be there before 7:00.
And I, and I don't want to, I don't want to beat this up too much, but the Finance Committee meet, you know, weekly for months, and I meet with them weekly for months, you know, to try to create a consensus on what this budget should look like. And they put in a tremendous amount of time and effort. So, so when we get to this point between, you know, my efforts, the Finance Committee's efforts, the school administration and the Committee's efforts, in conjunction with our finance officers, Town Accountant, Treasure Collector and assessors, that we feel about as good as we can about what we're putting in front of the public and that we're all on the same page. So.
And if you'd like to look at the details of the budget or the entire warrant, they are online at the Town website, abbingtonmass.gov. You can download it or just read it online if you'd like. Moving through the warrant, we're not going to go through all 31 articles, but just some of the, the ones that reoccur and kind of important. Article three is our capital plan, which is a list of capital purchases, vehicles, certain investments or improvements around town. That again, is all within the budget. There's a list of those. Anything you wanted to note of record?
Well, I think the, the only things that, that might stand out to people, the underground utilities on the municipal complex on Glennewitz Way, this was something, you know, again, as Sean mentioned, we have a five-year rotating plan. There are some things that move to the top of the list very quickly, that don't really go through a five-year process. Municipal, the underground utilities on Glennewitz Way, people may notice, that's in conjunction with the new school facility. It had been suggested that, and obviously, the opportunity to move the, the utilities underground before Glennewitz Way is finalized, is completed and paved, the opportunity to do that is now. So that, you'll see that on the warrant right now. Some of the other things, the curbing, replacing the HVAC at Town Hall, that goes in conjunction with some efforts in last year's capital plan, and that's because of a failing system. That, that's something that can't wait. You'll also see on here--
Which is now 20 years old, which is amazing.
Correct. Replacement of the Revolutionary War Monument. That, some people who, who aren't down Glennewitz Way very often may not be aware that there was a accident, a vehicle accident that hit our memorial last year. It hasn't been fixed yet. There is an insurance recovery. There's also a court proceeding where there may be more recovery from, from that. The timetable of that could be longer than we wish. We wish to get that project completed sooner rather than later, right after school gets out. It's possible none of this money has to be expended. If, if not, it remains in free cash and can be reallocated at a later date. So this is another project, obviously, that was not on a five-year capital plan. This is an opportunity we want to take advantage of now. So.
And that vehicle accident was unrelated to school construction. It was a, happened on a Saturday or Sunday night.
That's correct, correct. So, so again, other than that, most of these are recurring, replacing a, you know, a heavy-duty pickup truck for the Public Works Department, you know, that's something that's been on the plan, moved its way up. So, so again, it's a combination of, of things that have been waiting to be replaced over a long period of time and some one-time, some opportunities that have risen, we'll say, to the top of a list rather quickly. So.
So if the townspeople, the residents who are in attendance at Town Meeting approve the, the list, the capital plan, then you'll see some of these things, for example, burying some of the utility lines along the entrance to Glennewitz Way will be done this summer. The school building budget is paying for the repavement of Glennewitz Way. And then Rick just alluded to the renovation, refurbishment of the, of the monument that stands in the center, the rotary. So you see that all kind of cleaned up and taken care of. Just moving on, Article four is an annual one with establishment approval of revolving accounts. These are some typical accounts that some of the departments have to utilize. For example, if you want to rent the library room, the money goes into a revolving account. It's used to then clean and maintain the library room. There is, the Board of Health has one, the Police Department has one. Again, you can look at it and ask questions before Town Meeting or after Town Meeting. Before we go into further, you've mentioned the word, the term "free cash" a few times. It's one of the worst misnomers there is. If you could explain briefly to those who may not be familiar, we take, we pay for a lot of things, not a lot of things, some things out of free cash. What is free cash?
Free, free cash is sometimes undesignated fund balance. At the end of a year, the Town Accountant closes out the books from other, you know, from our, the, from the town budgets. Revenue that exceeds projections, for instance, you know, tax funds, you know, state aid, estimated receipts that come in over and above that, that was projected by the town. Budgets that weren't fully expended, this is a simplistic, but, but essentially, all accrue to fund balance. And at the end of, end of a year, those are, you know, tallied by the Town Account, submitted to the Department of Revenue for certification. That becomes essentially free cash. I mean, it's more complicated than that, but that's essentially what free cash becomes. That is certified by the Department of Revenue and that becomes available for appropriation in the following fiscal year. And the last four years or so, the Town of Abington has been, usually generally in excess of a million dollars, which, and that is what we utilize to fund our capital plan. That's what we have been using generally to pay off our snow and ice deficit, rather than carrying that into the next fiscal year. It's been one of those items that has been cited, was cited in our, you know, by, you know, bond rating companies as a plus in upgrading our bond rating, you know, conservative budgeting practices. So.
So typically, your philosophy has been that you're, with your budget, like a homeowner's budget, you're conservative on your estimates of how much income you're going to get through different sources of revenue, and you're conservative on how much your expenses will be. You may look at that kind of a higher level and hope that there are lower.
Correct.
And at the end of the year, if we end up getting more revenue, maybe because a long-outstanding tax bill is paid unexpectedly, or a state offers more revenue.
Sure.
And as you mentioned, expenses are lower than typical.
Exactly.
We're in the black.
Right. That's exactly, exactly right. We, we could justify higher expenditures based upon more revenue. We could do that, but we don't. The time may come, you know, if we have an economic downturn again, which, which contributes to lower receipts coming in, estimated receipts that, that contributes to a cut in state aid, you know, hopefully we've got a little bit of room that we wouldn't have to cut services or, or, you know, cut employment because we have a little room to work. But, but, but let's not fool ourselves. If we have a significant economic downturn, you know, you know, cities and towns, you know, we, you know, the margin isn't that big for most cities and towns, including Abington. But we try to be conservative on, on both sides of the ledger. And, you know, our department heads are very cognizant of that, including our largest departments, school, police, fire. And if they weren't, this wouldn't work.
Right.
So we're very grateful to their, their efforts to participate.
So moving forward through the warrant, we'll skip to Article seven, is the Community Preservation Act proposal. The Community Preservation Act, if you're not familiar with it, the Town just adopted, I believe, two years ago.
Correct.
And so the Committee has met and reviewed various applications, and based on their budget, some of which comes from the Community Preservation Surcharge and your tax bills, some which comes from the state, they are proposing some expenses moving forward to some additional improvements at Griffin's Dairy, some more walking paths and some bridges over the ditch there. They are proposing some new fencing for some of the town fields and parks to kind of clean up those areas. Riley Field, the track, the rubber track that was installed there in 2004, has seen its day. Now, we're, if it's approved, it'll be, it'll be resurfaced hopefully this fall. There'll be some additional lighting around the summer concert bandstand, some lighting for the pickleball courts. And the American Legion Building, the historical building in Abington, will have some exterior repairs, repairs, which we paid from these funds. Again, it's there for you to, there'll be a presentation, a summary, and then we'll ask the voters to approve or ask questions. Articles 14 through 17 are some of the, an item that's getting a lot of discussion, and we expect that there'll be people there that have either varied opinions or a lot of questions. And this is dealing with the new marijuana laws in Massachusetts. And Town Council's going to help walk us through this because it is somewhat convoluted, can be confusing, but I think if we try to simplify it, it might make a little more sense for it. Let's step back a sec. Last year, the Town of Abington voted to allow marijuana to be sold in the Town of Abington, retail use. Some people refer to it as pot shops, but we call them retail use. There's essentially, as I understand this, and I'm learning myself, three kind of bags of, I shouldn't say bags, three, three areas or kind of classes of marijuana uses. There's the medical use, there is manufacturing and cultivation, and then there's the retail use, the selling of marijuana. Article 14, oh, let me back up again. The Towns last year voted to allow marijuana to be sold in Abington, but also enacted a moratorium not to allow any to open up or start until after June 30th of 2018.
Correct.
So that moratorium is set to expire. So Article 14, your first article in, regarding the marijuana discussion, is a motion to extend that moratorium from June 30th of 2018 to, I believe it's June 30th of 2019.
Correct, yes.
Can you explain the purpose of that?
Well, the, yes. The purpose of that is due to the fact that a lot of the regulations are still being interpreted by the, by the Attorney General's office. So the logic behind this is that to wait and see as time goes on and as the Attorney General will say, makes decisions and interprets and reinterpretes what, what other towns are doing throughout the state, that by June 30th, on or about, or leading up to June 30th of 2019, towns like Abington and others that extend their moratorium will have a much better idea as to how the Attorney General is going to be interpreting regulations and will have a much clearer idea as if you, if you, whatever the town accepts, how it will be accepted by the Attorney General. One of the, for instance, you know, one of the regulations that's in the proposed bylaw by the Planning Board sets this 20% rule. Well, of, I'm sorry, 20% would, would restrict the amount of retail shops to 20% of, of your liquor establishments in town, common liquor establishments. Well, that word "common liquor establishments" was initially interpreted by the Attorney General to refer to all-alcoholic package retail sales. Well, that had since been interpreted to be all, not just all-alcoholic, but package, all-package sales. Well, that would require beer and wine, too, include beer and wine establishments. Well, that can be a big difference in cities and towns, 20% of those. That could, so instead of having perhaps one so-called retail pot shop, that could be two or three or four, depending on how many liquor establishments you have, rather than, you know, when if you have four common, all-alcoholic, you could have, you know, 12.
So what you're referring to, the 20% rule is a formula that was put together at the state level.
Thank you, Sean, yes.
To try to have automatic limits basically in the city of town. So.
Right. So that's one example of how the Attorney General has interpreted and then reinterpreted one provision of this law. And if you multiply that by the various regulations that have been submitted to the Attorney General over the past year or so, that's an, that's an example of why a, a longer moratorium makes sense to let the dust settle.
Right. And I know the selectmen have been looking at this.
However you feel about this issue, however you feel about this issue.
The selectmen have been looking at this issue and the Planning Board have been looking at this issue. And I believe the Planning Board's motion is going to be, to recommend approval of the moratorium. And as Rick just alluded, whether you are for marijuana or against marijuana, you still might want to consider the moratorium for all the reasons that Rick just said. In this Town Warrant, there is not a proposal for Abing to enact, to enact the 3% tax that is allowable under the current regulations. And I believe it's because they kind of wanted to see how the regulations are revised, so that perhaps next spring, when we have Town Meeting, we can vote what restrictions and regulations might apply if marijuana is allowed in Abington.
Right.
Which leads us to the second article, which is Article 15 regarding marijuana. This is a proposal for a, to basically reverse last year's decision. This would be an article to propose a complete ban of marijuana in Abington for non-medical purposes. Medical marijuana is already allowed in Abington. No one's opened up any shops here in Abington. But Article 15 proposes a ban of retail marijuana or cultivation and manufacture of marijuana. Now, it's our understanding in some of the meetings we've been having, public meetings, the Planning Board is going to make a motion to amend that article to suggest that we should ban just the retail use, but allow, in addition to medical marijuana, also allow cultivation and manufacturing, should a business like that want to come to Abington. It's up to the townspeople to vote. Do you want to ban everything but non-medical or but, but medical marijuana, or do you want to ban just the retail and allow medical and cultivation? That's what Article 15 is about. If the ban in any form gets approved, it will not take effect until and unless there is a separate and a later ballot election to be scheduled by the selectmen to confirm that ban. So, just to play out some of the, the way this could happen, if Town Meeting were to vote to, let's just say, ban marijuana in Massachusetts for retail and growing purposes, and then later at the ballot, it fails, that the ban does not pass, then that means the ban does not take effect. So come next year, maybe after the moratorium expires, marijuana users would be allowed, businesses would be allowed to come into Abington. And that's why we have Article 17, I'll jump to 17 for a second.
Yes, yeah. Yes, yeah.
-which is the Planning Board's recommendation for proposed zoning restrictions for a marijuana retail or growing facility, if it were to be allowed in Abington.
Right.
I know what I just said was somewhat convoluted, but it is the Planning Board's recommendation that town meeting should adopt the zoning bylaws, whether you are for marijuana or against marijuana, because they need, they're suggesting the town should have restrictions in place, in case through one manner or another, the ballot election fails, or the town meeting just says no to a ban, that at some point, a marijuana facility comes into Abington, there should be zoning restrictions. That's the purpose of Article Seventeen.
Sure. And, and who, who among us know what could change at the state level anyway with regard to this question? And having appropriate zoning is a smart thing to do-
Yeah.
Regardless of what happens with regard to a ban. And just to point out too, Fifteen and Sixteen are essentially piggyback. Fifteen and Sixteen, Fifteen is the zoning ban suggestion, Sixteen is, is the general bylaw ban. They actually are the same question ultimately. One is a zoning ban, Fifteen, Sixteen is simply a general bylaw with the same question. And this is a suggestion by Town Council to have it both as a zoning question and a general bylaw question. And this is what you're seeing in other, other towns that have done the same thing. So, this is, just to, it may seem like overkill, but this, the concern is that ultimately, the Attorney General may require it to be in both forms, and we don't, and the goal isn't to find out in a year that this is what the Attorney General is going to require, it's to take care of it now, if this is what the town wants to do.
Theoretically, if the voters at town meeting in Article Fifteen choose to ban retail marijuana in Article Fifteen, we would suggest that they also ban retail marijuana in Article Sixteen, because once, the first is the, setting up the zoning bylaws, the second is updating the general bylaws.
Right.
And vice versa. If they choose to not approve the ban in Fifteen, then they will likely be urged to not approve the ban in Sixteen.
And, and consistent with that, if the town wishes to ban the retail sale, but allow for cultivation, testing facilities, et cetera, Fifteen, a motion to do so in Fifteen, and a motion to do so in Sixteen would be consistent. And if that's what the Planning Board's going to propose, there will be a motion prepared to do the same in Fifteen and Sixteen as, as in Fifteen.
And again, as town moderator, I'm not, I'm not urging you to vote either way, but my goal is to try to make the process as understandable as possible, and I hope we're helping somewhat, but we will reiterate all of this at town meeting with the assistance of Town Council.
Correct.
So, Article fourteen is a vote for the moratorium, to just extend the moratorium, to give the town more time, if, if the voters believe, to set up regulations moving forward. Article Fifteen and Sixteen asks the town to consider if they want to reverse last year's decision, either completely and ban the growth and the selling of marijuana, or to, we believe there's going to be a motion to ban just the selling of marijuana. If that ban passes in some form at town meeting, it'll only take effect if there is a later ballot box election, which the selectmen must schedule at a later date, the date's not been set yet. So, a ban will only take effect if town meeting votes for the ban, and if the ballot election votes for the ban. If either one of those fails, well, if it fails, the ban fails at town meeting, we won't bother with the ballot election. But it is possible if town meeting voted for a ban at, at town meeting on Monday, if that ban does not pass, the, the no votes outweigh the yes votes at the ballot election, then the ban does not take effect, which again, is why the Planning Board and the selectmen have been working together with Article Seventeen to propose zoning to set in place, in case we, Abington decides to move forward with either retail marijuana and/or the cultivation and growing of marijuana.
And, and consistent with that, if that should happen, we've been instructed by Council that adoption of the 3% tax would be at a later date by, by town meeting. It's a state acceptance statute, it would simply be done by a vote of town meeting, but to do that prior to adoption of, you know, through town meeting and through a ballot election is premature. And again, the adoption of that is, is a simple process by adoption by, at town meeting anyway. So, so that would be forthcoming, should the town adopt some form of marijuana regulations. And, and that 3% tax would also apply to the manufacturing and cultivation, not just retail sale, if that's what the town chooses to do.
And that would be a local tax paid directly to the town of Abington to supplement our budget. Again, on the town's website, abbingtonmass.gov is a copy of the warrant with the map showing where this zoning district would be. It's called an overlay district. So, if Abington endorses and approves this zoning bylaw in Article Seventeen, and it must be approved with more than a two-thirds vote, so again, whether you voted for the ban or not previously, we're asking everyone to consider this zoning bylaw in Article Seventeen. And on the map, it shows that the area in Abington where they are proposing to restrict the locations for retail sales or cultivation is basically the north side, the north end of Route Eighteen, just north of Sorrell's, if you know where Sorrell's is, north of the Ale House on Route Eighteen, and also the northern end of Adam Street, Route Fifty-eight. That would be the, what we'd call the marijuana overlay district, if town meeting approves it in Article Seventeen. Right?
That is correct, yes.
All right, so then, moving on, Articles Eighteen through Thirty-One all deal with, in one way or another, some sort of amendment revision to our zoning bylaw. Zoning bylaws, as I guess alluded to, always require at least a two-thirds vote or more of approval at town meeting. There are a number of different things being suggested from the building inspector, from the Planning Board, and by petition, and I was one of the petitioners to help write four of these, so I will be stepping down as moderator during this part, and have a former moderator, Jack Buckley, will take over the reins, so there's no conflict there. But just to go over these things, we're adding to the definitions of what a swimming pool is in our bylaw, because that's needed to help kind of regulate and enforce things, also what a carport is, it should be considered part of a building. It's not clear in kind of the bylaw, the bylaw as it's written. There is a proposal with updated, more definitive regulations about driveways and parking lots where they can be loaded, located in a residence versus commercial construction. One of the big ones is Article Twenty-Seven, it's a proposed rewrite of the sign bylaw. The sign bylaw is a portion of our zoning bylaw. The sign bylaw committee's been working, I believe about two years on this.
Yes.
And they have it, it's, it's rather extensive, but again, it's printed in the, in the warrant for you. They'll have a quick summary to go over it and answer any questions if there are any. We're trying to get all of this done in one night, and we should be able to. Typically, Abington town meetings move along pretty well, because people do their homework before they get to the meeting. There is also a proposal for the creation of a business development district. That would be in the same general location where I just alluded to the marijuana overlay district, ironically, no direct relation. Basically, what is now the technology business district on the northern end of the town, we're changing the name to the business development district, and also changing what they call the use chart, to allow certain businesses that we like to attract to Abington to move into that part of Abington. For example, restaurants, and, oh, there's a number of different things you can look at, and we'll try to explain at town meeting, to try to make that area of town a little more business-friendly, to get businesses to come to Abington now that a lot of the property owners and businesses up there are competing with the likes of Union Point, for one, and with the construction of Route Eighteen, once that's finished, it may be a, a nice place to put a business. So, there is a lot that will be going on. Some of these are just changing words that will probably require a little discussion. Some of them will have a brief summary and presentation for you. All of them require two-thirds to approve. If it's less than two-thirds, it doesn't get approved. Again, if, this is all on Monday night, May 21st. The doors open at 6:30 at Abington High School. If you walk into the lobby, we'll be checking you in by your last name, so there'll be four lines of different sections of the alphabet. We encourage you to arrive early and check in, because we'd like to start right at seven o'clock, or as soon as, soon thereafter as we can. Rick, do you have anything else you wanted to kind of touch on?
I, just briefly, I think there is one other, just brief article, that I don't know that it's very critical to anybody, but we are looking to just fund a fire contract and a library contract. Again, these are relatively minor in the context of some of the things we've talked about, but I'd be remiss if I didn't put in a plug for some of our fine, hard-working employees, who, again, they're fairly modest. The funds are certainly available within our spending construct, they are recommended obviously by our selectman finance committee, so, again, I'd be remiss if I didn't put in a plug for our employees. So, that's, that's all. That's early in the warrant, and I expect, the meat and potatoes of this, I think, is our zoning. There's no question about it, beyond the, again, the budget priorities that we spoke about earlier, so that's, I just didn't want to miss the opportunity, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, what I've heard is there's interest in the-
Now I'll be quiet.
-approval of the budget, which includes the full-day kindergarten-
Correct, yes.
-the debates and issues and questions about the various marijuana proposals, some of the zoning provisions, but there's much more in there to look at. We're going to be, we're asking for permission to purchase a fire truck to replace a 1982 fire engine.
Sure, yeah.
But, the good thing is, what's presented to you is a balanced budget. We welcome your questions at town meeting, as long as it's something that's contained and addressed in the warrant. It's not a general open meeting where we can discuss any, any issue that's in, in town or in your mind, it has to be something that's on the warrant article. If it's your first time coming to town meeting, we'll, we welcome you. It's a pretty friendly environment here in Abington, and if you have questions, feel free to ask any member of the Board of Selectmen, myself, Sean Riley, or Rick LaFawn, the town manager-
Absolutely, yep.
-finance committee members, all the selectmen, finance committee members, planning board members, they're all volunteers, school committee members are all volunteers, they don't get paid by the town of Abington, they're there trying to do the best job for you, and this is where, at town meeting, we try to put forth some of the work that they've done through the year, and this is all planning for next year. Just to clarify one thing, we'll, we'll talk, do a lot of talking about FY19, fiscal year 19.
Yes.
The fiscal year for a town is not a calendar year, it starts on July 1st, so what, this budget we'll be approving will come into effect July 1st of 2018, and carry us through to June 30th of 2019.
Correct.
It's called the fiscal 19, or the FY19 budget.
It mirrors the state fiscal year.
Yes.
Yes, that's what, that is why.
Right.
We don't choose that.
So, town meeting is, what some people describe as the finest form of democracy, it is our legislative body, it's made up of the voters of Abington who are able to come and attend. You have to be a registered voter to vote, but this is where you can kind of approve some of the work that's been put before you, ask your questions, offer any amendments if you like. We hope that you'll be there on Monday night, May 21st, at Abington High School in the beautiful new auditorium. We're actually taping this right now from our new school here in the cable studio. I want to thank Justin Shanahan for all this help putting together. Rick, I want to thank you for being here to help walk through this with me.
My pleasure, glad I could help.
All righty, so hopefully, we'll see you there Monday night, we'll get a lot of work done for the town of Abington, and we appreciate you tuning in to this show today.